Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 29th, 2018 Board of Selectmen Meeting. I'll read the agenda. 7:00 PM Citizens Input, 7:05 Foxborough Commission on Disability Annual Above and Beyond Awards, 7:15 Public Hearing, Jesse Nos, George Bell, Craft Sports and Entertainment LLC for Monster Jam 2018, 7:30 Stadium Advisory Committee, George Bell, Appointment of New Members, John Hardy, Alex Silva, and Jared Duckworth, 7:40 Michael Laracy Town and State Citation, 7:50 Public Hearing, Amend Flammable Storage License, Colba Enterprises LLC, 32 Commercial Street, 8:05 Annual Town Managers Evaluation, 8:15 Selectmen's Update, 8:20 Town Managers Update, 8:25 Assistant Town Managers Update. Jay Barrows, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jay. All right, 7 o'clock Citizens Input.
Do you want to introduce you?
Yeah, just state your name for the record, please.
Sure. Good evening, my name is Julie Jaberi, J-A-B-E-R-I. And I'd like to thank you all for your time this evening on behalf of the Foxborough Race Amity Day Committee. In observance of Race Amity Day 2018, as proclaimed by the Governor of Massachusetts, the Foxborough Race Amity Day Committee is pleased to announce the showing of the TED Talk by Bryan Stevenson, we need to talk about injustice at the Orpheum, Marilyn Rodman Performing Arts Center, on Race Amity Day, which is June 10th, from noon until 3:00 PM. I believe there was some materials that Amanda gave you ahead of the meeting, so, okay. So, in the Foxborough, Greater Foxborough Race Amity Day Committee is supported by the Baha'i Faith in Foxborough, Bethany Congregational Church, Foxborough Universalist Church, St. Mark's Episcopal Church, and the Sherram Pluralism Network. The committee members are composed of representatives from those organizations at this time, and we're inviting others to join us. Race Amity Day was established at the end of 2015. The Massachusetts Legislature passed the Race Amity Day Bill, which is House Bill 2745, Chapter 165 of Acts 2105. This is the first in the nation legislation, and was signed into law and celebrated in a State House Ceremony with Governor Charlie Baker in February of 2016. The bill was the outgrowth of the work of the National Center for Race Amity at Wheelah College in Boston. The Race Amity Day Act states, "The governor shall annually issue a proclamation setting apart the second Saturday in June as Massachusetts Race Amity Day to recognize that the people of the Commonwealth are its greatest asset, to recognize that the Commonwealth is comprised of multicultural, multi-ethnic, multiracial citizens, and to encourage friendship, collegiality, civility, respect, and kindness as the commonly shared ideals of the collective citizenry of this Commonwealth by joining with communities across the United States to reflect on the beauty and richness of the diverse peoples of this great nation, while reaching out with the spirit of amity toward one another annually and recommending that the day be observed in an appropriate manner by the people." So, I was asked to come here tonight, invite any and all of you to join us on June 10th, and to invite you to also issue a local proclamation if the town would like to support that event in that way, which one of you can read at the event if you're able to attend, or we can read on your behalf.
What time is it on June 10th?
Noon until 3:00.
Okay.
So, the film is about 25 minutes long. We'll be having some introductory talks for about 10 minutes. Representative Barrows has been invited, as well as Senator Feeney, and we'd like for one of you to join us if possible. We'll be showing the film about 25 minutes, and then breaking for refreshments, and for those who want to stick around, perhaps breaking into discussion groups.
Okay, all right. Very good. I don't think we need to read the statement, we'll create one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody have questions on the board? Although we can ask questions.
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for Citizens Input? Seeing none. Foxborough Commission on Disability Annual Above and Beyond Awards.
So, good evening, my name is Sue Collins, I'm Chair of the Foxborough Commission on Disability. This is Margaret Cheeksan, and also in the audience is Cindy Curran, Jim Muller, and Charlie Haps, and two other people may come later, I don't know. All right. The goal of our commission is to advise and guide the town of Foxborough and the public regarding issues of accessibility in accordance with the American Disabilities Act. Each year, the Foxborough Commission on Disability gives out Above and Beyond Awards to recognize those who make a positive difference in the lives of people with disability. So, this is the third year we've done, given out the awards. So, this year, our winners are Chris Gunn of Primo Sandwich Shop and Paul Farmer of Farmer Signs. So, to tell you about Chris Gunn, Chris and his staff have made his restaurant, Primo Sandwich Shop on Mechanic Street, a haven for a local man with intellectual disabilities. The man lives in a nearby group home, and for decades has spent most of his days at Primo's, where he has his own table, and he receives VIP treatment. Chris has been an advocate, mentor, and supporter of this man, his housemates, and others in town with disabilities. So, it's with great pride I present this award to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And Paul Farmer is the owner of Farmer's Sign on Green Street. He is also a Foxborough firefighter and a paramedic. Paul is well-known around town for the Patriots banners he makes for the town common, and I hope we get to hang more banners up this year. But Paul also has quietly been donating his services and signs to many groups that serve those with disabilities. So, this includes Best Buddies, Massachusetts Commission for the Blind, our Massachusetts Commission on Disabilities, Bailey's Team Run for Autism, the Arthritis Foundation, Norfolk Advocates for Children, and several more. Paul's generosity has provided these groups with free banners, signs, and vehicle lettering. So, it's with great honor I present this award to you, Paul. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And Representative Barrows has a citation, I believe?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, good to see everybody again. Congratulations to Paul and Chris, thanks for all that you do, and in recognition of that, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, we hereby know unto all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers sincere congratulations to Paul Farmer and Christopher Gunn, in recognition of being recipient of an Above and Beyond Award. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given today the 29th day of May, 2018, at the State House, Boston, Mass., signed by Robert De La, our Speaker, and authored by yours truly, Jay Barrows, your State Representative. So, congratulations, it's great to see you both recognizing the work that you do, and thanks for being a part of the unit.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
It's our turn to talk, so I just want to thank you both for everything, and I know Jim wanted to say a few words, too.
Just briefly, I actually did a double take when I saw Chris walk in here today. I've known Chris and Paul for years, and we didn't get anything in our packet of who was going to be the recipient, so I didn't know. So, when I walked in, then I slowly put two and two together, only when you sat there. It's been a pleasure going into Primo's, and you're very accommodating, and I see Roger back there, you make it part of your business. Hi, Roger. And it's just a part of who you are, so, and same thing with Paul. Paul has put himself out there to the point where I'm sure your door is being knocked on on a daily basis for free things, because you make it there. So, I didn't expect any of you guys to do this for our citation, but it's just, it's great to see you at the table, and I think Foxborough should be proud that we have two people that put themselves out there for the cause of the community. So, thank you very much.
You choked me up, Jim.
That free sandwich.
Don't be doing that so you won't throw water balloons or squirt guns at them.
Just a forewarning, all of you, when you pass by Primo's, kind of move away from Jim.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
They kept it secret from us, too. They kept it secret from us, too. Good choices, though, really good choices.
We got two minutes before our public hearing.
She's here.
Everybody's here?
No, because if they're, well, how far off are we?
We're a minute away.
Oh, no, that's fine. That's fine. It's like 20 minutes or something, and then someone walks in.
The other room.
If it's a public hearing, you can always read the, read it in before.
All right, so now we'll move to the next agenda item, Public Hearing, Jesse Nos, George Bell, Craft Sports and Entertainment LLC, Monster Jam 2018.
All right, the Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter 140, Section 181, and Section 183A, and Chapter 136, Section 4, Town of Foxborough General Bylaws, Chapter 229, and also Stadium Rules and Regulations, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May 29th, 2018, beginning at 7:15 in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, 40 South Street, to review the application submitted by Craft Sports and Entertainment LLC and promoter Feld Motorsports, Inc., for Monster Jam 2018. Event is proposed for Gillette Stadium. Application for this event is on file at the Office of Selectmen. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
Evening.
Hi, Jesse Nos with Gillette Stadium.
George Bell.
So, here before you this evening to request the license for Monster Jam. This is the fifth consecutive Monster Jam that we'll be hosting at the stadium. It's a Feld Entertainment production, so it's been the same producer all five times. And this is also the same organization that brings us Supercross, which we had in April of this year, and we also had in April of 2016. So, from an operational standpoint, there were really no significant changes to Monster Jam this year compared to what you would have seen last year, or even the year before. We are requesting June 9th, which is Founder's Day. It's fallen on Founder's Day for three years now, so, you know, we obviously continue to work closely with both Chiefs to make sure that public safety isn't unnecessarily strained, the timing works out really well with Founder's Day being that Founder's Day is more of a morning-heavy event, and then this comes in later, a little later in the afternoon. So, there's two components to Monster Jam. There's a party in the pits, and then there's the actual Monster Jam production itself. The party in the pits takes place from 3:00 to 6:00, and that's in a fenced-off area in our East Club parking lot. And then Monster Jam itself begins at 7:00, and it runs from about 7:00 to 9:00. So, the party in the pits is an upsell. It's a fan experience area where you can go in, and you can get your autographs from the riders, experience different Feld brand products, and you can't purchase a pit party pass without having purchased a Monster Jam ticket, but you can purchase just a Monster Jam ticket. So, we do about 15,000 people in that party in the pits, and then we anticipate about 30,000 people in the building for Monster Jam itself. We've got the entire lower bowl of the stadium open, and we'll get pretty close to selling that out. We have the east mezzanine, and the southwest mezzanine will probably open, the northwest mezz as well, which are those 200 level corner areas. And then we have the east club open as well. As of right now, we probably, we don't really see a demand for the west club, although it might open. Before we do that, we'll, of course, run it by both Chiefs as well, just so they're aware. We don't foresee going into the 300 level at all for this event. So, like I said, attendance right around 30,000. We kill the first 5 to 10 rows of the stadium, we cover them with downsizing. It's part of Feld's overall safety operation for this event. If a patron steps beneath that wrap line at any point, it halts their production in its entirety, so it's something that they take very seriously. Another aspect of the sort of the safety operation that they do is the fuel depot. They have a really extensive plan in place, and they work really closely with Chief to make sure that he's happy with it, everybody's aware of how the fuel's being stored, where it's being stored, all the safety precautions in place, because there's a large amount of flammable fuel on site for this event. So, other than that, I don't think that there's anything, like I said, it's the same, it's really very much the same operation as we've seen before, and we're looking forward to hosting the event again.
George, you got anything to add?
We reviewed it, and my only comment is, though, it's a fairly loud event in terms of the tractor noise. There were two factors that created minimal impact and haven't created significant issues. One is that it's contained on the floor, it's not speakers, it's just inside the stadium, and the other is, the event's over by 9:30. So, we talked that out, and don't anticipate any issues, and would recommend to the Select Board your approval.
Had we ever had any issues with noise, people complaining about it?
No.
And those are the same hours in the past with Founder's Day? No change to the hours?
Yep, no change to the hours.
Any other questions on the board? This is a public hearing, anybody in the audience have any questions? Seeing none.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made, second, and all those in favor? Board, why does anybody else have any questions on this?
I mean, I've been following it year to year, and you do hear it, but it's minimal, and I just haven't seen any impact. It's been successful as far as I've known, and very minimal complaints, if anything, right?
We will have somebody representing us there.
Our biggest problem with this event every year is, it's a family event, so we have a lot of young families and a lot of first-time families coming in who, and the kids aren't prepared for the decibel level. So, we have a whole customer service system in place to handle that when it happens, because there's always some tiers, but that's the extent of our behavioral issues at this event. It's nice.
That's an exciting event.
It's a good problem to have.
Please, you want to make a motion, then?
All right, move to approve the application for Craft Sports and LLC Monster Jam 2018 at Gillette Stadium?
Second.
All those in favor?
Great, thank you.
You guys had a successful weekend?
We did.
The NCAA?
Yeah, broke records again, which is fantastic.
Of attendance?
Yes, yes, I think it was on, it was Saturday and Monday, but it was, it was an excellent event. Unfortunately, now it moves to Philadelphia and then to Hartford, but we'll be available.
When, Mike, we see it again?
Well, we don't know officially yet when we'll see it again, but hopefully it'll be sooner than four years.
Now, you guys were good to the local teams and the area community that came, that were invited in?
It's great how many youth lacrosse players, and specifically in Foxborough, we get to get involved in that event, whether it's the on-field ceremonies, or playing on the field beforehand, and one of the things we do for that event is, the Foxborough Youth Lacrosse Teams will actually welcome the championship teams to the banquet. So, as these teams are coming into their championship banquet, they're greeted by just lines of screaming Foxborough Youth Lacrosse Players who are so excited to see them, and the kid, the students, the players are always taken aback by it, but it's something that we only do here, and it's such great energy to be around, it's really, really sweet to see, and there's a lot of cool things like that that happen all weekend.
Oh, the whole thing with Sean Lowry.
Yeah.
That was pretty cool, too.
Yeah, yeah, you don't often get a high school Division One player playing at that level in our town, so it was...
As well as he did, too.
Yeah, great.
Thanks, guys.
George, you can stay right there, George, I think you're not, don't go very far. So, 7:30 Stadium Advisory Committee, George Bell, Appointment of New Members, John Hardy, Alex Silva, and Jared Duckworth.
Thank you. Could I trouble the potential candidates to come up?
So, we have so many more events coming to the stadium, you need to add more people in your committees?
We're replacing. We've had two vacancies, and then with the loss of Mike a couple of years ago, three openings. First off, George Bell, and I represent Stadium Advisory Committee, and I'd like to thank you for putting us on the agenda. I'd like to introduce three candidates who have submitted applications with the Select Board for positions on the Stadium Advisory Committee. They are John Hardy, Jared Duckworth, and Alex Silva. These three candidates, if approved, will fill vacancies on the committee that we currently have. They have been reviewed by our members, and we recommend them for your approval as new members. These young-spirited candidates will help balance the anticipated concert workload, and significantly lower the average age of our members. So, I, with your comment, I'm open.
What is the total size of the committee?
Committee is 15. And our, I want to say our goal, but our commitment is that for every non-sporting event is to have two members at least present during the event, and so we basically spread it out. Everybody has a commitment of going to two events and manning the hotline, and otherwise, you know, being available just to make themselves feel, and have an understanding, because, again, in working through the process, every, every event, or every group of events is a special permit, and I think that it's evolved to be that the members are a big help in working together with the town officials, as well as the stadium officials, to review the events and come up with thoughts on potential issues of impact, and then come before the board, so.
Do you three want to say a few words?
Sure. I know most of you at the table, good evening, John Hardy, live at 454 South Street, down on the end of the road here. Been in town for about 37 years now, raised three kids through the system, been through college, and they're all off working now, thank God. I'm a camp engineer by education, and MBA, and mostly work in manufacturing world, certain teed, and before that, burdened son years ago, Walpole Company, a building materials manufacturer. Ran a plant for about 25 years, built new factories, now I do kind of operations activities for the company nationwide, and I've been volunteering in something rather since the day I got here, seems like from school, coaching, was Chairman of the Landfill Repairment Committee years ago when we were trying to do that, and on the building committee, I believe, for about 20 years, et cetera, et cetera, and I love the town. I think, you know, the craft organization has a good job greatly, for the most part, and there's always things you can keep your eyes on, the businessman, both for his side and our side, make sure they keep their part of the bargain. I think we want to make sure we maintain good relations and hope to keep the stadium running well for the long future.
My name is Jared Duckworth. I currently live at 48 Gocasset Street, although I'm in the process of purchasing a new home in Foxborough. Actually, I saw one of the realtors that we're purchasing from right in the back there.
Just making sure you can pay.
Hopefully, you got the check. So, my wife and I moved to Foxborough about 2013, and we decided recently to make it our long-term home. We have a 10-month-old son, and we plan on raising him in town, and, you know, being part of the town, and the fabric of the town, and the stadium being what it is, when we first moved to town, we weren't sure how we'd feel about it, but after living in town for four or five years now, it's a, I think it's an integral part of what makes Foxborough Foxborough, and I think it's a great place to live, and hoping, you know, being part of this committee to kind of shadow what he said, just to continue to make sure that it stays that way, and, you know, looking forward to representing the residents of the town of Foxborough. And in terms of my background, my business background, I'm a business owner. I own a, with a family business, electronics manufacturing firm based out of North Attleboro. We've got a couple of their offices around the world, but, so, been doing that for about 10 years now, and I don't see it changing anytime soon.
And I'm Alex Silva. I also moved to Foxborough in 2013, about five years ago. I'm an actuary by trade, so I do a lot of math at work, work for an insurance company. My wife's a teacher in town in Foxborough. She teaches Spanish at the elementary schools. I definitely, I've been looking for ways to volunteer in the community, and this felt like a great opportunity to help out the community, you know, echo what John and Jared said as well, so, just looking for ways to give back, and this seems like a great way to get my feet wet.
Would anybody on the board have any questions?
Just a general question, because sometimes we struggle trying to get volunteers, good volunteers. How did you find out about the Advisory Committee? Were you approached, or you saw it in the paper?
Well, I found out via Alex, I think, who found out via George.
Jared and I are childhood friends, so.
Yeah, we've known each other for our whole lives.
I met George at St. Mary's, so we actually served on a committee together, a volunteer committee, at the same areas in Foxborough.
Okay, so George is the recruiter?
Yeah.
Good job, George.
Word of mouth. I've been a member of the committee for a long time, and we used to ski with George till, I haven't been unfortunate accident a few years ago, but it's been a long time when I hear the good stories about how the committee's actions have been in their work, they do so.
Excellent, thank you.
But I must say that I felt that the applications came forward, I mean, I had said to John that there could be vacancies still in the application, but Alex, you were, you know, I was pleased to see, and I said, is that the same person that I've been on a committee with? You can see the credentials here, I'm a little, you know, just going down a little bit my seat. And again, I just want to voice for the group that, from my perspective, I mean, these major events there, it's about public safety, and I think you should be, I just want to acknowledge that you should be honored the way the various agencies, the police and the fire department, the seriousness that they take it when we sit down and go over the potential of what could happen there, and that's why I feel that many eyes, it would be helpful to make sure that that continues.
So, are all the terms, are all the members one-year terms? We reappoint every year? Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
No. Mr. Chairman? If I could just say a few things, first of all, I've known John for a number of years now, because John's been actively involved in the building committee. He's a very valuable member, valued member of that committee, he's done a great job, he was involved in overseeing this project, as well as, you know, a lot of the school projects we're still working on right now, the Borough School Project right now. So, John is a very valuable member of this community, and I'm very glad to see him step forward in this role as well. Glad to see some youth coming forward on the committee, and not to say anything against the members that we've had, because they've all been terrific members, but it's just great to see more youth getting involved in government, period, because we think we really do need younger people getting involved, because there's only so many of us older folk to keep doing this, you know, so, but quite honestly, I'm glad to see that, doing it, I'm really glad, really pleased to see you, folks with your credentials, come forward and serve the community in this capacity. Thank you.
And when you don't recognize the names of the people that are playing at the concerts, you know it's time to bring youth in.
All right, make a motion.
All right, move to approve the appointment of John Hardy, Alex Silva, Jared Duckworth as new members of the Stadium Advisory Committee for a one-year term beginning today, May 29th, 2018, and expiring May 29th, 2019.
Second.
Motion made, second, and all those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
See you. Okay, you're on. Thanks, George.
All right, next on the agenda, Michael Laracy, Town and State Citation. Come on up, Mike. Come on up, Jay. Yeah, yeah, it's fun. This was on our agenda the last meeting, but we moved it to this meeting. Does anybody from the committee want to say a few words before the?
Yeah, Mike does.
Sure, Tom Buckley, I'm the chairman of the Board of Assessors, here with Rob O'Donnell. And I'd like to introduce you to our newest elected member, is Laurie Rudd. Laurie is a twenty-year resident of the town of Foxborough. She raised three children here, and very excited to have her on the board. Standing, sitting here today, recognizing Michael. I've known Michael since first grade. We, he, his time on the board was very enlightening. We worked through some very difficult decisions that we had to make. It was his guidance and his sense of fairness that really helped all of us, you know, really see through, you know, what we do on the Board of Assessors, and that's trying to, you know, the fairness of taxation throughout the whole community. So his presence on the board, although he would never step up and become chairman, will be sorely missed. Congratulations for your, and thank you for your time in the, on the board.
What are you going to do with all your free time now?
Well, that's the reason I'm stepping down, because I didn't have the free time with the job. So, you know, it was tough, you know, coming back from Stoughton, you know, to get to meetings, and, you know, especially around abatement time. But it has been an honor, it has been a privilege, you know. When you get to work with, you know, some of our most vulnerable residents, to see what they're going through, you actually see how certain projects, certain things in town, the taxes affect them. And it's great when you can sit down and help them when you can. That was probably the greatest part of my job. You know, we got the split tax rate, which was big. Boards before us wouldn't do it. And I know many of you on the board, we've gone before you and explained it, you know, why we saw the need. So getting that through was also big. I worked with some great people, you know, Tom my whole time here, Rob recently, Bob Hatch, you know, the staff, Hannah, Debbie, Kelly. And it's been a great job. You know, it was nice to volunteer for the town. So someday I'll step up. I was just looking at this committee before you and say, hmm, maybe next year. Yeah, it might be something else, you know, so. But thank you for allowing me to serve the citizens. You know, I'm a lifelong resident. I've been here fifty-three years, raised my family. So to give back, you know, it meant a lot, you know, even at this low, lower level of assessors. But it was important, so thank you.
I wouldn't say lower level, it's a pretty important level.
Oh, it's an important committee, absolutely. You know, but it really affects everything, you know, from the bottom up, you know, how things are done throughout the town and how they're financed and all that, so.
Do you want to read your?
Sure, just to recognize Michael's work and to say that it really is the basis of our whole community.
It is.
What you do. And it's taken very seriously, and, you know, you do help people, and you help explain and educate and let them know. So I know that your experience and ability to do that is going to be missed, but Laurie, I'm looking forward to you picking up the torch, so.
So it's a big torch.
A big fire stick, but then we have him down the end, we're all set. Mr. Buckley can handle that. But on behalf of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, we'd hereby know to all that the Mass House of Representatives office is sincere. Congratulations to Michael Larissy. In recognition of your three terms as an elected member of the Foxborough Board of Assessors and for years of service giving back to the community, the entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses a hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. And it's, I had it dated, because I thought we were going to be here last week or a couple weeks ago, May fifteenth. Doesn't make it worth any less, 2018. Signed by Robert Delio, the speaker, and yours truly, Jay Barrows. And again, thank you for your service and good luck with your retirement, and maybe you'll be back for something else, as always.
Yep, maybe.
Probably not forty-two years like Pete Turner. God bless him.
We have one too, and just for the record, it's dated on the twenty-ninth day of May. Official citation, Foxborough Board of Selectmen. The Board of Selectmen on this occasion of retirement commends Michael Larissy for his nine years of service to the town of Foxborough Board of Assessors. On behalf of the Board of Assessors and the town of Foxborough, recognition is given to Michael Larissy for your outstanding service to the town of Foxborough as an elected member of the Board of Assessors, which you served for nine years. Your guidance, fairness, and compassion will never be forgotten as the board navigated the difficult decisions related to the fair and equitable distribution of the tax obligations for the town and its citizens, and assisted those neighbors who required a helping hand. It is not always easy for citizens to volunteer their time for important functions in the community. Everyone is busy in their personal and professional lives, but it takes a special person to give back to the community, and for that, we are forever grateful. The Board of Assessors and the Board of Selectmen hereby thank you for your many contributions, dedications, and commitment to the town of Foxborough. Our best wishes go with you as you begin the next chapter in your life. This citation is given under the seal of the town of Foxborough on this twenty-ninth day of May, 2018. We will get this to you shortly after tonight's meeting. David is not here, so we'll get it all officially signed. And just one other thing to throw in about Mike. Back when I was a cup master in Scoutmaster, he was instrumental in helping us out throughout every pancake breakfast we ever had with all of the plumbing stuff and making sure. I just never even had to pre-plan, I just gave him a call, usually last minute. Hey, Mike, you gonna be at the O'Hern to hook up the grill? Yep, no problem.
Yeah, then they got me cooking too.
Oh, yeah. Really appreciate your service.
Thank you, Chris.
Yeah, I actually had the pleasure to walk into a public meeting in Stoughton, where I see Mike on the other side of the table for that drive-through. And I said, oh, does he not like me? But I was proud, you know, a Foxborough person, seeing him in your, you know, in your uniform in another town doing your job. And you've always carried yourself quietly, professionally. Sometimes the quiet ones get the most stuff done, and I appreciate that.
Yeah, it was, you know, my twenty-three years here as a firefighter in Foxborough, nineteen full-time, that you allowed me to gain that experience, to move on when I did the Walpole, then once again, you know, to Chief in Stoughton. So, you know, there's the experience here, so, great.
And thank you for proving my plans over there.
Can we get a picture to get in the newspaper? Do you have a camera? Want to get the whole board?
Do you want to hold the one that's dated the twenty-ninth?
No, that's fine, yours is fine. How do we want to do this? You're the boss.
No, I know.
One, two, three. All right, perfect.
There you go, excellent. Great, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
They're needed every other year, but it does, you always ask.
On the second line?
Doesn't cover your expenses. Plane ticket for us? Where were you?
Farland Town.
All right, so we have a public hearing in ten minutes, so we're going to have to go through some action items and stuff first, right?
Sounds good.
Leah, you want to go through the action items?
All right, so the first one, move to approve the fiscal year 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting schedule.
Did everybody get a chance to look at that?
Yeah, I saw Christmas was the only one that, it's a holiday.
Yeah. Do we want to add another meeting in December? Maybe do two weeks in a row, because December always seems Board of Selectmen-wise with all the licenses and everything.
Yeah, there's always, yeah, there's a lot of licenses going down.
And it just seems like there's never enough time, and I know December's a busy month.
About the eighteenth?
That's what I wrote, I kind of penciled that in with a question mark.
It's probably a good time, because that's close to the end of the fiscal year, or calendar year earlier.
Yeah.
Before it began into the holiday week.
Yeah, other than that, I mean, all of the dates looked fine to me. Any objections adding the eighteenth of December?
I actually think we did that last year as well.
I remember last December, I think we met almost every week, it seemed like, because there was a lot of stuff going on. So why don't we approve it with the footnote of adding the eighteenth of December?
The other thought too is that you've got, you've got three meetings in October and in April. Do you want to go with three meetings in those, in those months?
Every other Tuesday, I mean, typically of those, April we'll be getting ready for the town meeting, so we probably need it.
October two, yeah.
October, we're probably getting ready for.
Fall town meeting.
October, we could be looking at an early town meeting this year, only because of the Borough School Project. So it could be late September, early October.
Okay. I, I mean, they fall every other Tuesday, so I would leave those ones, that's just my opinion. Anybody have any other issues?
No.
All right, so you want to make, so you made a motion to approve, we amended by adding the eighteenth?
So move to approve the amended fiscal year 2019 Board of Selectmen schedule, adding December eighteenth?
Second.
Motion made second and amended and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
All right, move to approve Hockamuck Area YMCA Foxborough Annual 5K and Kids Fun Run on September twenty-third, 2018, from eight AM to twelve noon.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve the Wampanoag Roadrunners Twenty-Fourth Annual Old Fashioned Ten-Miler and Five-K Races on February seventeenth, 2019, from nine-thirty AM to one-thirty PM, starting and ending at the Schneider Electric on DePont's at Ave in Foxborough.
Second.
Motion made second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve the gift donation of one hundred dollars to Foxborough Recreation from the Massachusetts Marine Trades Association for fishing derby supplies?
Second.
Motion made seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve the gift donation of five hundred fifty-seven dollars and fifty cents to the Foxborough Council on Aging Human Services from the Friends of Foxborough Seniors to pay for programs at the senior center as agreed?
Second.
Motion made seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve the gift donation of ninety dollars and seventeen cents to the Foxborough Police Department from the Rotary Club of Foxborough for the Haiti Exchange Program.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve tuition reimbursement for Officer Kenneth Fitzgerald in the amount of one thousand one hundred seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any further discussion? None, all those in favor?
Move to approve hawkers and peddlers license to Amy Lick of Vivent Solar to sell solar panels?
Second.
Motion made seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Move to approve hawkers and peddlers license application to Chris Jerome to sell hats, shirts, sweatshirts, gloves, and hand warmers at one hundred and five Washington Street in Foxborough, Mass.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any further discussion? Under discussion, does anybody know why on the hawkers license before there was a police background check, and on this one there was none?
He does a background check on all of them. They require you to do all of them.
There was documentation on the other one, but there wasn't on this one?
I think if it's a positive.
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't normally be included in your, but it's, the chief wouldn't sign off on it unless he had done that.
The last one, nothing came up though, when it was there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it just.
The last one was a positive one, and there was documentation that it was done and all that.
And that, but that was an appeal, is what it was.
No, no, the one that we just approved.
Yeah, the one above, the solar panel one.
Yeah, so I'd rather just make sure that we've clarified before we approve it, especially because the last meeting, we had the issue there, so.
Okay. I know that he's done it only because he approved it, but.
Yeah, well.
You just want to, you want to make.
Yeah, we have the documentation on the first one from the solar company that the background checked and everything was good, and there was no documentation on this other one. I'm not saying that he didn't do it, but we don't have documentation saying that he did.
And we also, I mean, these are public records, we had talked about redacting the social security numbers, and they're still on it, so it's.
It's unusual that we attach.
So why don't we table that one until the next meeting?
Okay.
Move to the next one?
Yep.
All right, and the last one, move to approve the Board of Selectmen minutes from May first, 2018.
Second.
Motion made seconded, anybody have any discussion? I've read through them, they were fine. Who had a discussion, all those in favor?
Are we all caught up with the meeting minutes? This was, what, are we one week behind?
One behind, I think.
Just one meeting, I think?
Yeah, I think we're one behind.
There's probably a bunch of, I think there's still executive ones that.
Executive sessions. We haven't had a meeting to meet through that.
All right, so public hearing to amend flammable storage license, Colby Enterprises, Colba Enterprises LLC, Thirty-Two Commercial Street?
The Board of Selectmen acting as the local licensing authority pursuant to MGL Chapter one forty-eight will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, May twenty-ninth, 2018, beginning at seven-fifty PM in the Gala Meeting Room, Town Hall, Forty South Street, on the application to amend the license and certificate of registration of Thirty-Two Commercial Street, Foxborough, Mass, for underground storage tanks from twenty-six thousand gallons to thirty thousand gallons of flammable liquids. Application is Colby Enterprises LLC. All interested parties are welcome to attend.
The brass there, or, you here for this?
I am.
Can you just state your name for the record?
My name is Steve Pedro with AU Benjinary, on behalf of Colby Enterprises, requesting amendment to the storage license from twenty-six thousand gallons to thirty thousand gallons. Right now, there are three tanks out there, two tens, ten thousand, and a six thousand. What Shell or Colby is looking to do is to replace those tanks with two fifteen thousand gallon tanks, double wall fiberglass with all the safety precautions and spill containment.
Pretty standard from looking at the fire guys in the back, everything. Anybody on the board have any questions?
So this unleaded and super is one tank? And then diesel's a second tank?
No, what happens is they compartmentalize one of the tanks, it has six thousand gallons of diesel and nine thousand gallons of premium. And then the other tank is fifteen thousand gallons of unleaded regular. So they blend at the pumps.
And in the application, this says site plans TK one through TK, but there was no site plans given to us. Is this basically, you pull up the old ones, put them in the same place?
Yeah, exactly.
Plus or minus a few feet?
Right, the tanks would be located in the same location, we'll pull the old ones out, put the new ones in. We do have plans that I believe will be submitted to the Fire Department, Building Department, and various town. I have a copy of plans if you'd like to see them.
If you have them, but, only because it says it's in the application, I just hate to... And this is the Shell? Let's just see the address, we don't see the name. Thanks.
Okay. When is it scheduled to be done?
I'm not too sure to tell you the truth.
That's fine, thank you.
So with those?
Yeah. Thank you.
Anybody else on the board? This is a public hearing, anybody in the audience? Seeing none? Close the public hearing?
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
Motion to close, seconded. Any further discussion? All, all those in favor?
Aye. Move to approve the amended flammable storage license for Colby Enterprises LLC, Thirty-two Commercial Street, Foxborough, Mass.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any further discussion on the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
All right.
Light in here, right? It's getting a little darker now.
Yeah. All right, eight oh five, we're ahead of schedule. Uh, annual town manager evaluation.
Ready?
Will I read that?
Yep. So, good evening, board. Um, as we have in the last four years, we've been compiling a summary of the town manager's performance evaluation. He completes a self-evaluation and followed by an evaluation by each of the members. Um, those are all submitted to me. I compile them and come up with an average. Um, we've been, um, giving you, this is the fourth year, um, a summary document. You have it in your board docs, but for the record, I will read the town manager's evaluation summary. It's, covers the period April twentieth of twenty seventeen to April twenty-first of twenty eighteen. Um, document is, uh, states as follows, the following is a summary of Bill Keegan's performance evaluation for the past year. The comments have been compiled from the submissions of all of the board members. Um, the categories are based on a numerical rating scale of one to four. Four is the highest possible rating. In the category of leadership and staff effectiveness, Bill's rating was a three point three six. In planning and organizing, three point four eight. Communication, community relations, three point two three. Problem solving, innovation and decision making, three point four five. Budget and financial management, three point five three. Customer service and quality of service, three point three five. Personal, professional and organizational integrity, three point five. Cross-departmental organizational management, which was Bill's highest rating of three point six. Um, to summarize the prior year accomplishments, um, I believe we only have a subsection because I know the work that happens, uh, in his office every day. Um, the completion of the new town hall, uh, initiated and successfully implemented the townwide electric aggregation program, coordinated and led the effort to purchase town streetlights, finalized the town's solar program, Elm Street and landfill locations, set the direction and priority to initiate several townwide personnel policies, balanced the budget and funded the capital plan for fiscal twenty eighteen, successful coordination of the commuter rail pilot program for Foxborough, worked with the Planning Board and Economic Development Committee on multiple priorities, improved the ongoing communication with Craft Group and other community partners, presented the town's first financial summit in the fall of twenty seventeen, recruitment and appointment of new staff, including a business commissioner, executive assistant, firefighters, police officers, public work employ, works employees, administrative staff, and of course, our community information specialist, chaired the SEMREC board, uh, so Bill's the chair of the Board of Directors for our southeastern mass regional dispatch, um, committee. Um, the goal for that group is establishing a fully operational regional dispatch entity by July twenty nineteen, and that's well on its way. Um, with regard to the objectives for the coming year, Bill submitted some and the board members submitted some, so this is a compilation of all of those. Um, the first objective would be to kickstart the downtown redevelopment, including the fire station and funeral home projects, expand the Route One development and improve the infrastructure needs in that area, the borough school renovation, hiring of a new fire chief and human services COA director in the coming months, starting the MBTA commuter rail pilot program in the spring of twenty nineteen. Um, our goal is to hold the second annual budget summit in the fall of twenty eighteen, um, and to continue to seek new methods and means of providing information to residents regarding town meeting. One example would be the survey that we did at the second night of town meeting. Um, I summarized for you a few of the, uh, in the overall evaluation portion, people had the opportunity to comment on, um, you know, their overall evaluation of, of the town manager, and I took, um, comments, some of them I abbreviated for, um, just for brevity and kept the, um, I, I indicated with a few, uh, dots to show you if I took stuff out. Um, the first comment I had is, I'm very happy to work with Bill for the last four years on a myriad of issues, both positive for the town and some difficult issues, that collectively we were able to contain and minimize its impact. Bill has taught me a lot about municipal government. We are lucky to have him and look forward to our continued relationship. That was a quote from one of the, one of your board members. Second quote, uh, I think that the town is being managed well and that Mr. Keegan is a professional forward-thinking, uh, is professional and forward-thinking and affords the staff and residents the time and respect due from a town manager. Over the past year, on occasion, I have agreed and disagreed with some of the decisions made or methods of addressing situations, but Mr. Keegan has approached the topics fairly with consistent professionalism. A third comment is, in my opinion, we are very lucky to have a town manager with the experience he has, the leadership he shows, the insight into what it requires to increase the town's commercial base, his interpersonal skill, not only with town employees, but his directors, townspeople, and all businesses in town, both big and small. And finally, um, the briefest comment, um, keep up the good work. So that is, um, respectfully submitted by me today, May twenty-ninth, twenty eighteen, and I want to thank the board members for participating in our online survey tool this time, um, and doing it on schedule with a lot of thought and a lot of good feedback, so, thank you.
Okay. Do you want me to say something here?
Oh, it's so awkward, isn't it?
It's, it's one of the most awkward times of my, of every year, but I greatly appreciate the, uh, the input from the board. It's, um, I, I, it's, I really do appreciate being here and I, I really welcome the opportunity to serve this community, this board, and the role that I'm, that I'm in, and, and I'm grateful for it. It's, it's a, it's a, it's, it's obviously been something I've done my entire life, um, but it's really rewarding to see some of the progress that we've made, just in a relatively short period of time. Um, but yet there is still work to be done. Uh, we always know that there's always a new set of objectives for the upcoming year. Um, we still have a lot of steps to take, but I will tell you, the steps that we have taken have been huge steps. They're not just, uh, they're not the small steps like they say on the, you know, one small step for man, one giant leap for mankind. In Foxborough's case, it's for one giant leap for, for Foxborough in many cases. Uh, some of the issues in particular include the new zoning for up on Route One, uh, as well as the, uh, the finishing of this building, the, uh, the new Borough School Project that we're working on right now, things that will have lifelong impacts for many people that live in this community. So I'm very, very proud to have participated in all those things and having an opportunity to serve the community in this, in a leadership role. Um, it's great working with all of you as individual board members and individuals, uh, all the, uh, past and, uh, past and present. Um, I want to thank, uh, Ginny Coppola for her service to this, to this community as well, and, and welcome Leah to the board and serving the board and going forward. Um, so I'm here to continue to serve the community in the best way I can possibly, certainly, um, and, and you know, and when I look at the scores, I, I think the scores are, are very fair scores and I, I'm very, I appreciate all of the, of the fine comments that you all made as well. Um, I never seek perfection because perfection to me is elusive. I do try to seek for excellence though, and excellence is something that we work on every single day, and I think that's what I try to convey to the, to the staff members, to the community, and to all the folks that participate in this government. And so, for that, on that basis, I'll, I'll finish, but I want to say thank you to all for participating in this process. Thank you.
Anybody on the board have an end to add or?
I always got something to add, but, and I share your sentiment on awkwardness. It's, I remember our past town manager, we had this same review process, a little differently because we put it together and presented it where this is going to a third party, an assistant town manager presenting it back to us, and, and there was some public discussion or criticism, and I got correspondence the next day saying, how dare you discuss this publicly? And, and the fact is, we don't have a choice. We cannot go into an executive session. So, and I looked at your scores, the one that you did on the self-evaluation, and then when you average ours, they're pretty close within a tenth of a point, so, not, nothing that's, you know, out of whack. But I noticed that the categories are scored, and then there's a big section on prior year accomplishments, but there's nothing on prior year, if I could have done it better, or shortcomings. All of the reviews that I've been involved with, we can always pat ourselves on the back and do twenty things, but the three or four things that we screwed up on, or we could do better, or we learned from, I think is more important than the accomplishments, because the accomplishments, look, if, we, I'm sure on that side you'd be liking to do a review of, of, you know, against a selectman, because there's probably so many things you can say, but we, you know, we get voted out if we're not doing a good job, but this is our opportunity to learn from it, and I would like, on the next one, um, and I'm not saying there is disco around, there's, there's plenty, but could we make an effort to criticize ourselves and say what we could have done differently? Um, you know, it's nice to put out a town survey and say, we did this, it's great, but unless you get the answers, it kind of falls short because you say the good things, and then people are always thinking, well, I said something, but it wasn't listened to. So I, I would like to see a list of, unless you're perfect and, and then we're not doing our job, because we can always do better, right?
I readily admit that.
So, I mean, that's, that's a question not to the management, but to this board, if you guys would like to see something like that.
We can definitely add another category in there with that, uh, quite, you know, the opportunity to fill that in as well.
Is that, is that something that we do, you do as, as a board, or is, is something I do individually? Is that, you know, you both, we both do it?
I, I think, I've always asked the person to do it themselves, and then we do it ourselves. So we could have different things, but if, if we're getting all positives back, it's just uncomfortable to say, well, you screwed up or something.
We can make it a category in the evaluation. You can just add a section.
It's an evolving process. I, I think this, evaluations are evolving things, so I, I have no issue with that at all.
And in fairness, you did it in your review. You named some of the things that you could have done differently, but it's nice to see it here. This is a document, so if someone picks it up next year, you can go back and look. Boy, this was a shortcoming, but he's really turned it around or something like that.
I appreciate that.
No, that, that's a good idea.
Yep.
Really good idea.
Okay.
I'll do that.
Yeah, so as far as anything else, I mean, we just got this document, got uploaded this afternoon, so, um, just got to kind of process it a little bit.
Right, so, um, at the next meeting, which is June twelfth, um, we'll be looking for, um, we'll have the actual, probably the chair and Bill would sign the actual document, and you would approve the terms of his contract effective, uh, I mean, for the, uh, the salary amount, because it's continued, uh, contingent upon a satisfactory performance review, so we would want you to approve, um, the July one salary at that time.
And then just one housekeeping thing for Amanda. Um, can we get all of the new contracts uploaded into this? Because we have Bill's old contract on here, so if we wanted to like, okay, your old one, we could, but not the, the current one.
Okay.
If we could do that. Okay, anybody else have any other?
Just as a point of public record, so there was five of us that submitted this. Uh, the review documents going to be available, or are we just taking your five bullets of quotes that?
So what we'll do for next time is we'll download the performance evaluation that shows all five votes, and the chair and Bill will sign off, and it goes into Bill's personnel file, so, um...
You don't get to look at the other evaluation, because then it becomes a public record.
That's my question.
Those are not public record?
Those are, that's a, well, then it becomes a public record issue if that happens, which normally the intent is to, is to do a summary evaluation to do it that way.
And I think as we've done in the past, if the board wanted to view it, it's, you know, we have it in our office, so.
So if a board member wanted to come in and see?
Absolutely, yep.
A board member can look at that, uh, that because you
We're just trying to figure out how to make the printout neat.
Their version, right.
The printout's kind of clunky right now, so we're going to work on that tomorrow, how to make it look neat.
So this summary is the only public document?
Yes.
Right.
Right.
Exactly.
Here's the contract, if you want to upload that.
Things on this?
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Selectmen's update, um, just want to thank everybody that came out for the Global War on Terror memorial dedication. That was a, a great event, beautiful memorial. Um, that same weekend, there was, uh, an event Sunday, I believe, at the Orpheum with Marilyn Rodman, performing arts under the Foxborough Museum, um, that Anna Lad put together, so if anybody gets a chance to go into the Orpheum, kind of see Foxborough history alive on the wall, um, it's pretty nice. Um, this, uh, we just had Memorial Day, so, um, appreciate everybody, Mike and his team and, and the VFW and everybody for participating in that. It's great to see how that has grown over the years and very well-attended event, so thanks, everybody on that. This Saturday, Jim, do you want to talk about the road race?
Sure. Um, actually, it's interesting. I mean, people are coming now that are presenting in front of the Orpheum for different things. There's a road race on Saturday, June second. Uh, we talked about it before, we're taking over the Foxborough against diabetes. We get a couple hun, hundred runners. I'm assuming some more people are going to show up on race day, but, you know, we'd love to double that amount. All the money, the proceeds go directly back to the community, back to the Rodman Performing Arts at the Orpheum, and it goes to the police relief fund, which is a great way to help other residents, and a percentage also goes to the diabetes. So if you're ambitious and you want to run five K, three miles, uh, it's at Inventus on Saturday, um, and it should be a good race, so hoping to build that up over time, and this will be a staple part of the community, and it goes directly back to the community. On that note, knock on wood if all goes well, we're meeting tomorrow morning to close, which is taking us almost a year. We've actually roped in the three people from the three different parts of the country, sitting down at one table tomorrow, and, um, hopefully we get it done, so.
Oh, good.
All good.
We'll buy the bottle of champagne.
Don't have the liquor license yet.
I just have two other quick things. Um, before our next meeting, um, Thursday night, June seventh, will be the first concert on the Common with the New Farmers Market, so that, that's always a nice kickoff into summer.
Yeah, we did, we did have.
And then, just a reminder, Founder's Day is June ninth.
That's all we have.
Doc, did you have any?
Nope.
Leah?
Nope.
All right, that's it for Selectmen's update.
Okay, okay. Very good.
Town manager's update.
Yeah, so, um, just a couple things. The, uh, today, we met with the, uh, the Borough School Building Committee, met again today, uh, trying to finish up some of the, uh, the direction that we're moving on, getting that project, uh, towards completion. It looks like we're, right now, we're on target to stay, uh, well within the requirements of the SBA process. We have, um, we, we, it looks as though we're, we're going to try to have a, a, a special town meeting, it's at late September, early October. The reason being is that if we're able to do that and we're able to get the funding approved, we might be able to actually start some of the construction early in this, uh, in this calendar year, which would allow us to be able to get some of the foundations in and some of the work done, um, during some of the breaks and, and even during the, and some of the outs, outer buildings to be done while this, during this calendar year, which gives a little bit of a jump for next year. Uh, the bulk of the work will be done during next calendar year, um, and, and a little bit into, possibly even into the year after that. So we're, we're looking to, uh, to, to, and we're moving ahead very well. The committee's been meeting on a regular basis, and, uh, the project is moving along at a pretty good clip. Um, just a Just a couple other things. The SEMREC Board is going to be meeting again this month, and I think we're probably going to be at a point where we're going to be looking to present the Board with the new location, of the Foxborough location. That's being contemplated, the report came back very positive. So, we're going to be making an announcement. We think at the next, on the 14th, we're going to try and meet and make that announcement officially. And we'll come back to the Board and let everybody know that, that's going to be happening. The Town of Foxborough Board of Health is actually having a free total cholesterol and blood pressure, blood sugar clinic here at Town Hall on Wednesday, June 6th, for anybody who's interested, if anybody in the public is listening. Registration is required, so please call the Board of Health at 543-508-543-1207 for an appointment. And we'll be happy to include you in that. Just want to say a couple things along the, with respect to veterans. Very pleased to see that the ribbon cutting went so well for the Global War on Terror Memorial Veterans Memorial that has just been added to the Common. Grateful for everyone to donate to that process and to have that built here in the community, it went really, really well. Yesterday was another great day for the Memorial Day process, the parade, as well as the event that actually occurred. I had somebody say to me afterwards, that they've been to several events in these towns with the Foxborough, and it's always, they're always so impressed by the fact of how well this is coordinated and how well it's put together. That goes to Mike Johns and his staff for making that go as smoothly as it does, so. Thanks to Mike and everyone who participates in that. Also, just the Foxborough Registry, the Norfolk Registry of Deeds will be doing a community outreach program, and they'll be holding office hours at the Foxborough Public Safety Building on June 7th from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. They do that on a quarterly basis, and, actually, I think it's biannual basis. They come out and they do their normal outreach to the community, ask anybody who's going to question about the Norfolk Registry of Deeds work, and they can actually, you can bring your information and questions to them, and that's, and that puts a wrap on my report for tonight.
I just have a couple of things. This week, by the end of the week, we'll be posting the Human Services COA Director position. Vicki Lowe's retiring, as Bill announced at the last meeting, so we'll be posting that position and, you know, looking for a very active recruitment with that. Been working hard to prepare for the implications of the Pay Equity Act. There's going to be a lot of scrutiny done for, especially in municipalities, they're gearing up to come out and do inspections of your records, et cetera. So, any town that can get their records in order and begin a self-audit before July 1 are going to be in good stead. So we're working on the pieces of that right now. That law goes into effect July 1. We are beginning our library negotiations in the next week or two, so we start, although Town Meeting approved fire and DPW contracts, we're starting the next round with library, and then we also will with police and fire as well. And I know you probably meant to mention it, but we're gearing up for the first Student Government Day on June 5th. A lot of us have already gone out to the seventh grade classes and done presentations, interacted with groups of students. They'll be coming here to Foxborough Town Hall. We're going to be doing a whole Government Day. We're going to kickoff, and we invite members of the Board to come to our kickoff. I believe it's going to be at 9:30 on June 5th. And then, that'll be a half-hour intro session, and then the students are going to spend an hour with various department heads, sort of shadowing us and working in our offices, and then we convene back in this room for a mock Board of Selectmen meeting, where the students will service the Board. And we'll have department heads, you know, mock department heads presenting to them. We're going to come up with an agenda, and, so it should be a fun day, and then it culminates with a lunch, and we're really looking forward to it. It's been fun working with the school department and the kids.
This is, it's great to see that the, that the middle school is sort of taking this project on, but this, the Student Government Day was something that I've had experience working with in many other communities, and this is something that really needs to get done in every community across the Commonwealth, across the country, because we do not spend enough time on civic engagement, civic organizations, and civic involvement. This is, this will truly give kids a real taste of what it's like to be serving in your roles. And ultimately, the, sort of the payback for that, or the pay it forward, if you will, is the fact that someday, some of those kids will actually become Selectmen, or actually become Town Managers, or Assistant Town Managers. And I've actually seen that happen in my lifetime. So, it's great to see that involvement at an early age. The involvement that I've had was typically at the high school age, but I'm glad to see it's being done at the middle school age, because I think we can actually start to get their interest involved at an age like that. So, the middle school teachers ought to be commended for bringing this forward and pursuing and supporting this idea.
That's good. The American Legion does a similar program called Boys and Girls State, where it's state and even higher government. It's a pretty good program.
That's it, that's all that I have.
Hopefully you can all join us that day.
Yeah.
Thank you.
June 5th, 9:30 to 10?
Time for 9:30 to 10:30.
Alright, I think we're wrapped up?
Yep.
Alright.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.